Ladies and gentlemen. Oh, do we have two, we do have two students and we have Emma Orchardovic joining us as well. Okay, okay ladies, we're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
This agenda really reminds us of why we're here and it's because of students. And we've just honored two of them tonight for leading us in the pledge. We also have an annual art recognition that takes place this evening. And so, we are going to be awarding certificates to students whose work is, some of whose work is preserved and presented to us around the walls of this particular building. And we have certificates for these students in recognition of their achievement. They all read, "This certificate is presented by the Oshkosh Area School District Art Education Program and the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education in recognition of artistic achievement and participation in the Oshkosh Area School District Central Office Student Art Exhibit." So congratulations to all of you. Your names will be read, your art will be displayed up on the board up there for everyone to see, and you can come up to the edge of the table here and receive your certificate. And Dr. Gunlock will be reading the names tonight for us.
He will, he will. The first recipient is Braden Placinsky. Ellie Gill. Actually, there's a second one in here for Ellie Gill. Harmony Carter. Jack Tetslaw. Jenna Kent. Sarah Hernandez. Jaclyn Kasubuski. Yana Robertson. Kami Schlothauer. Haley Norton. Tatum Mel Norrie. Leah Welch. Quinn Thierman. Luke Loether. Zoe Olmstead. Lily Mott. Sydney Shaneberger. Brandon Bancroft. Rachel Weichert. Ayanna Riesop. Niall Dar. Sarah Pizon. Trinity Funnel. Elena Anich. Emma Ducati. Jenna Brewer. Fahad Mian. Jace Wyland. Jarrett Elger. Madison Sonier. Charlie Martin. David Haneman. Emery Erickson. Genzel Phillips. Madeline Merrick. Zachary Cornell. And the second one for Zachary Cornell. Bella Messenger. We're getting hungry. Danya Mian. Grace Whitcomb. Ella Siri. Evan Booms. Jayden Yang. Zoe Tang. Bryn Kopernol. Logan Bivens. Macy Placinsky. Brady Johannes. Anna Timkey.
Let's give all the children a round of applause. How about another round of applause for the art teachers who have some points? Thank you, Mr. Dr. Gunlock. Those students who have received their certificates, you're more than welcome to stay with your families, but if you have other things to do tonight, we certainly, we certainly appreciate that as well. And we'll make sure the other students get their certificates. In keeping with our celebration of students tonight, one of the things that has been most beneficial, I think, to this board in terms of gaining insights and wisdom from students from our high schools has been having student representatives serve on our school board. And it's always a fun time to welcome new students and a bittersweet time when we have to say goodbye to some students because they're going to be graduating and going on to bigger and better things. So, we have certificates for our two, I don't want to say retiring student representatives, but our current people who will be moving on in the years ahead. And so, we just want to thank them and recognize them for their service to our board. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you so much for representing your school.
And we're going to miss you and wish you all the best in the future. And we have a small parting gift for you tonight, that's your very own copy of Robert's Rules for.
That's what you wanted.
You can do all the boards now.
I'll read it right through.
We also had the opportunity to recognize Josh Bannon, who is joining us. And he will be taking over for Cassie Lively, who wasn't able to be here tonight. But similarly, we appreciate her contributions to this board and the insights that she shared as a student representative, student representative, and look forward to her success in the future. And likewise, we will be sending this along. Welcome, Josh. Best wishes to our two students. We will see you at graduation.
Yeah, hopefully.
Well, we hope so. We sure do. All right, then we move on to board and administrative reports. Board President Report, very brief. I had an opportunity yesterday to observe two reading recovery classes yesterday and was really impressed with the level of analysis and the passion that those teachers were showing for those two children who needed some special help in reading. So, thank you to Katie Hanisch for inviting me to sit in on those two sessions. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, and so, I'd like to give a shout out to all the teachers in the Oshkosh Area School District, those who teach teachers, those who supervise teachers, and those who are teachers. And let's give them a big round of applause for the different things. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Superintendent's Report. And actually, the first item under that is North High School. And we know we've got students who have to study for exams tonight, so we will understand their need to leave early tonight. So, we'll start with North High School.
All right, so keeping up the sartans, it's the season finale. I actually have future president Emily Mooski here joining us. But we'll get right into things. Starting right out, we had prom April 28th, and it was a night to remember for some of us because we had a hypnotist there and he hypnotized quite a few students, yours truly. It was a great experience though, and a lot of students had a great time. And it's a night to remember. Moving on, we had the Unity and Community event from our Communities One group. It happened May 5th at the Leach Amphitheater. There were a lot of free games, food, and just cultural awareness. And a lot of the community students said they had a great time hosting it and learning. Another communities project is the Damascus Project. The Damascus Road Project is something that focuses on human trafficking and sex trafficking as well. And they partnered with Communities Two student Autumn Kephardt. And they will be showing a film tomorrow at, from 6:00 to 8:00 in the auditorium. And they'll just be talking about sex trafficking and more education about it and what you can do to help. And here's what Autumn did right outside of North. They went out on the sidewalk and just chalked it all up with signs and it's great. It's probably gone now, but it's great to look at. There's also the Bike Osh event that happened May 5th. It was a great communities event that just had people going all around the city, going to all different destinations, just promoting biking. As Barb said, it is Teacher Appreciation Week. So, Student Council had various desserts for our staff and just some cheesy signs saying, "There's muffin we could do without you, teachers." And just a great way to support staff morale. Wave Robotics, again, they've been doing amazing. Kieran Lowenstein led our robotics team in the division finals in Detroit over prom weekend. And I was just talking to her, and they were a division finalist on Curie Field. And that's just amazing to hear. I know Kieran, and that was a great way for her to end her senior year. A Date with Judy was the play that just happened this past weekend again. The play is about Judy Foster, who tries to beat out, took see white men out of being clean. And to do so, she has to raise a lot of money, and whoever raises the most money wins the title. And it gets her into a lot of antics. So, we have lead Corinne Latta, who did an amazing job. I don't know if any of you guys were able to see it, but it was just wonderful.
It was.
And then on to some North Athletics. While Mother Nature has still gotten in the way, we still have managed to play some ball. Softball has been doing amazing. They're currently undefeated, and they're hoping to go back to state and hoping to get back-to-back FBA titles. Tennis, they've also, and golf, they've also been delayed with their matches. So, I haven't really been able to get pictures. Golf, they've only been able to have, play in three meets. They haven't really been able to practice either due to the courses being closed. But they're hoping to at least get something. Boys tennis has played 15 matches, but they've all been away. But the North and West meet is scheduled tomorrow, and that's a great one to head to if you can. Soccer, our record is 4-5-1 right now with the majority of our games being played on turf fields due to the weather. But they've had 15 games scheduled, so they have a little bit ways to go, and they're doing great. Baseball, same scenario, but they're hoping to play more and they're doing great out there. And track, they're heading into their competition season, seeing as they haven't been able to really have their regular season. And they have conference coming up soon. All right, and here are some upcoming events, as you can see. And then I have graduated, underlined and bolded.
Don't forget.
Yeah, so it's been great presenting with all of you, and that's all I really have. I'll hand it over to Josh.
Thank you very much, and good luck on your exam.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so to start off with, about a couple of months ago, I think it was probably around March, we had our spring fundraiser, which was our Journey Together fundraiser, which is a group that helps train surface dogs for people who are suffering from PTSD. And our goal was $1,000 this year, and we were able to reach $1,000.
I wonder how you did that?
And to raise this money, we had an open mic night, so we had students come to this. And we had, they were able to sing, tell jokes wherever they wanted to. We just had it open for two and a half hours, and they were able to have a good time. We had snacks and stuff open, and that was able to help us raise our $1,200 we did that night. For sports going on, we have a boys' track and girls' track. We have a couple of stand-up athletes that are doing really well. And we have conference coming up next Monday and regionals also. So, we're heading into our, like, the final leg of our season there, so that'll be really exciting coming up. For baseball, they are, boys' baseball, 7-1 right now. They actually rank 13th in the state, so they're doing pretty well right now. Girls' softball, they're struggling a bit more, they're 5-4 right now, but they still have a couple of games left, so they have no time to turn out. Girls' soccer, they are, they are 5-3-2, so they're, they're kind of a tough season ahead of them, but I'm sure they can turn around soon here. Boys' tennis, they are going through the, going through motions, they're doing good right now. I think they can work on it, and they can get this through. Boys' golf, they also have a couple of stand-up athletes like Ben Wilford and Drew Slyfe. They have a bit of season left ahead of them, and I think they can pull through also. Our spring play, we just had, was Little Shop of Horrors. And that pretty much is, the synopsis series is a meek, it's a meek flower shop assistant, Seymour, who Pine Springs coworker Audrey. During the, it was during a total eclipse, he finds an unusual plant, he names it Audrey II. But it can only feed on human flesh and blood. And the growing plant attracts a great deal of business from the previous drug list, from the previous drug list order. After Seymour feeds Audrey's boyfriend, Orin, to the plant, to the plant after Orin's excellent death, he must come up with more bodies for the increasingly bloodthirsty plants. So, it's pretty, he's trying to find more bodies to feed to this plant that only eats humans. It's kind of like a twisted, kind of funny. And so, right now, we're in our safe driving week at Oshkosh, where we brought in the crush car. And we're just making students and teachers more aware about being a safe driver, like not being on your phone. Make sure we're a seatbelt, just be more attentive at times. So, we're trying to make everybody more informed in that way also. And also, we had, we had a graduation for these youth leadership students right here. They just had a fundraiser a couple of weeks ago. They, they'd had over 500 people attended. I kind of forgot what exactly fundraiser it was, but they had 500 people with us, who was fairly successful in that case also. And we also had prom last weekend. Our theme was Starring at the Van Gogh, so that was pretty interesting. That's a picture of me, Cassie, and our secretary, Chuck, and Mike Kent there. So, it was, yeah, it was a really fun night.
Thank you very much. Good job for your first presentation. All right, then moving on, the Superintendent's Good News Report.
All right. Thank you. There we go. Congratulations to the Merrill Middle School and Oshkosh North High School students who competed at the State Conference for Skills USA. They are actually here, so I would invite them to come forward and tell us a little bit about Skills USA and what happened. You guys can tell us your name and tell us about Skills USA.
My name is Lauren.
I'm Ellie.
I'm Michael.
And we did a team engineering problem at, down in Madison.
And the problem was, we had to build a car out of limited time with limited resources to get past rocks, sand, and up carpet. And our car ended up getting the furthest, and then we had to do a presentation of like, why they should buy our car.
We had to make a little sales pitch about it.
Then when we got callbacks, we were really excited, and then we had to verse six other teams that got callbacks. And another group of, or another eighth grade team also got callbacks too.
How many of you are on each of the teams? Is it one huge group or are they like?
Yeah, it is groups of three.
Okay.
Yeah, so you qualified for something big, right?
We're going to Louisville, Kentucky in June.
What?
At Nationals.
At the National Skills USA Competition. Awesome.
So, when you get there, will they give you a new? You don't know until you get there what your challenge is? And it's you three, are you three a team?
Yeah.
Good luck. Yeah, come back and let us know how you did. And good luck.
Take good pictures.
Yeah, let's see.
Thank you for coming.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
And our next item, and they'll come up here as well, is congratulations to the 19 Webster Stanley Middle School students who participated in the regional round of the National History Day competition, based on the theme of conflict and compromise. Four students will move on to the state round of competition, while three students will compete at Nationals in a group performance entitled, "The Hamilton-Jefferson Feud: Conflict That Changed A Nation." Wow, you guys gonna sing or not? I never got to see Hamilton, so I was thinking maybe.
Oh, I've heard it in my car and everywhere else for like five years now.
So, National History, it's a really, a truly inquiry-based project, and the kids have a lot of choice. And they, it's a nationwide program, National History. And also, they do the research of a historian, and then they decide to communicate that in a couple of different choices, and these three decided to do a performance.
Our project was on the Alexander Hamilton, Thomas Jefferson feud of 1790. I played George Washington.
I played Thomas Jefferson.
And I played Alexander Hamilton.
So, these three, really, they, there was 25, I think 25 performances at state, and they were one of the top two in the whole state. They are also moving on to.
Where do you get to go?
Yeah, we're going, it's in the University of Maryland.
Nice.
Where did you get your costumes?
Borrowed them from theater programs in town.
Are you gonna go get some?
I just needed to know.
And they're performing in about 20 minutes. At 7:00, right?
Where?
Where?
At the Morgan House for the Historical Society.
Let's wrap this up.
Let's have a gamble.
Well, that's tremendous. Another reason to celebrate students tonight.
So, yeah, we're also, you know, so it's part of, you know, they're getting a stipend from the Historical Society Cube. So, we're trying to do some fundraising to get out to DC, so there's gonna be a GoFundMe page set up. Well, there is one actually set up, and there's also a newspaper article that'll be coming soon.
What comment do you guys look into for funding?
It's about $1,800 per kid.
So, six grand.
So, for the people watching, how can they give you money?
How can they give you all their money?
I'm not sure, I mean the.
GoFundMe or is that by Webster Stanley Middle School?
And ask them.
I'm not sure the exact link, but.
And just ask for the National History Day, okay.
It's on our Webster Stanley Middle School Facebook page.
Gotcha. Webster Stanley Middle School Facebook page.
Good luck, you guys.
Congratulations.
We'll see you back soon too. And good luck with your prom.
Okay, I don't see anybody else with wigs or anything in the audience, so.
Nice jackets.
We'll keep moving then. Congratulations to students in the MELT After School Program at Merrill Middle School for recently winning a $500 prize from Clever Braises for Kids that will help to fund the MELT program at Merrill. Clever Crazes for Kids is an educational website that awards kids each week with top scores receiving prizes such as gift cards, backpacks, shoes, or sweatshirts. Homeroom time at Perry Tipler Middle School in Alps is used to teach positive behaviors and build community with students by having them participate in team-building challenges through Homeroom Olympics. Teams work together in fun challenges such as a spoon and egg race, beach ball launches, and paper airplane contests, and compete against other homerooms. Congratulations to the winning homerooms. Max Lambert, a student at Carl Trager Middle School, always has a positive attitude, is outgoing and friendly, and can always be heard saying, "I hope you have an awesome day today." In honor of Max and to promote Max's attitude, Carl Trager students had the opportunity to purchase a Be Like Max t-shirt. Fox 11's Good Day Wisconsin featured a segment on their show about this initiative. And I saw that, it was pretty cool. The Oshkosh Area School District and Oshkosh West High School received the Above and Beyond Award from the employer support of the Guard and Reserve for being an employer who goes above and beyond to support staff members who are in active service in the National Guard or the Reserve. John Miller, an Oshkosh West High School teacher, who is a sergeant major in the Army Reserve, nominated Oshkosh West for this award, so congratulations. Students from Webster Stanley Elementary School in grades K-5 performed in their spring concert with small and large group singing, instrument playing, dancing, and student speakers. Webster Stanley Elementary School's second grade students recently read the book, The Wild Robot, which is a story about a robot named Roz who wakes up on an island and needs to survive in the wilderness. Students then were tasked with designing their own Roz robot who could withstand the challenges and they read about in the story. Congratulations to the 37 Oshkosh North High School students. Congratulations to the thirty-seven Oshkosh North High School students who performed at the state solo and ensemble in over fifty events. Students received awards and in, in which the events that are listed here. On May five, the city of Oshkosh, in partnership with the Winnebago County DA's office and communities at Oshkosh North High School, hosted the first annual Unity in Community, which celebrates diversity in the Oshkosh community. Realizing that diversity is growing in Oshkosh with over fifty languages spoken at Oshkosh North High School, Mayor Cummings' message was the importance of understanding each other and learning from each other rather than fearing the unknown. The Oshkosh Area School District was, presented a check for a thousand dollars at the event to be used for art programming supplies in the district. Be sure to check out the decorated rocks throughout the community that community students created and spread in the awareness of this event. Congratulations to Oshkosh North's Emily Liskey, who has been chosen to be in the twenty-eighteen Wisconsin Honors Orchestra in the French horn section at the Wisconsin State Music Convention in October. This is actually her fifth year in the state honors program, as she has achieved a place in the middle school honors band for two years, the state honors band, the state honors choir, and now the state honors orchestra, which is phenomenal. It is a very rare accomplishment for someone to be selected in all three music areas. Great work, Emily.
And she's sitting right here. She's sitting right here.
You gonna bring your instrument? You gonna play something for us? No? Awesome job. Thanks to the UW Oshkosh English Club, who fundraised in support of Oaklawn's four-five classroom reading and literacy, the school was able to order three hundred and fifty dollars in books for the guided reading bookshelves. Students and staff are so very appreciative of this partnership and the efforts of the English Club. Oaklawn's Running Club had great participation in the Oshkosh Five-K event recently as well. So, great job. High school students in the Oshkosh Area School District participating in the youth apprenticeship program recently celebrated with area employers involved in the program during a breakfast. Employers included Oshkosh Corporation, Aurora, Mercy Medical Center, Miravida Living. Crew and Bemis were present for the celebration, as they provide some of the hands-on learning for high school juniors and seniors who are interested in a future career in each field of work. Thanks to the Oshkosh Chamber for its partnership and support of this valuable program. South Park's sixth-grade students traveled to the Fox Valley Technical College campus to learn about the post-secondary educational opportunities available to them in the fields of healthcare, welding, IT, construction, robotics, and aircraft electronics. Thank you to Fox Valley Tech for this great learning experience. Thanks to all who donated or supported the Shapiro STEM Academy Family Night, where over two hundred family members joined in the fun evening of learning and laughter. Students in kindergarten and grade two at Jefferson Elementary School had a walking field trip around their school's neighborhood, where they delivered mayday baskets and letters of thanks to people in those neighborhoods to brighten their days. Students were also very proud and thankful for the new electronic school sign that was received as part of Project Curb. Ten student ambassadors and two adults at Lakeside Elementary Schools, school, are participating in the Fuel Up to Play Sixty program, as a result of the grant from the National Dairy Council. Nutrition is the key component of this program, and students recently sampled varieties of cheeses and grapes, choosing Colby as a favorite, with Munster as a close second. I would concur with that. Students in fifth grade at Lakeside Elementary School researched biographies for influential people in history, and then dressed the part of the person they researched during the biography fair, where families and other students could see and learn about that influential person. And that concludes the superintendent's good news report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Gunlock.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other supplemental reports from any administrators? Thank you, Samira, and certainly, Emmeline, you're welcome to take her place, or not tonight.
She's like, no, I gotta go.
We'll see you next month. Thank you. Are there any other administrator reports tonight?
No, there are not.
Okay. And what about committee chair for committee chairs? Okay?
Okay. Before I do that, though, would it be, I wish I would have put this in the superintendent's report, but I wanted to congratulate fellow board member Jim Evans for the successful hatching of the Lake Fly project. It was amazing and well done.
Yeah, thank you for your work on that, Jim. That was great.
Three years in the making.
It was great to see so many student entries in that contest.
Really great.
Okay, so, education committee met on Thursday, May third, and we heard from Julie Conrad regarding our next curriculum adoption. Julie provided a presentation regarding the K.A. curriculum adoption for twenty-eighteen nineteen. She explained the process that began in two thousand fifteen, when a task force was created to look at next generations and standards. The task force focused on three-dimensional learning, which meant that the district needed resources that covered all dimensions, with one being science and engineering practices, two being cross-cutting concepts, and three being disciplinary core ideas. After going through the process and pilots, it's very exciting to announce they have decided to adopt Mystery Science. The teachers were overwhelmingly in favor of adopting this tool, this kit, and the recommendation is being made for a three-year adoption, with science being reevaluated in the spring of twenty-twenty-one. The K-5 price quote for three years is thirty-five thousand dollars. Grade-level materials are fifty-three thousand dollars. And the district is also seeking a .5 employee position to organize the kits at UW Oshkosh. STEM outreach support is being lost, and this was a huge support for the district, so we'll need to make up for that position. And the total cost will be about one hundred and two thousand dollars, which fits into the budget. At the middle school level, teachers met on April eleventh, with the group being evenly split between two resources, Amplify and HMH. Amplify was the final choice due to readability, ease of use, and online platform, and stronger scaffolding towards three-dimensional, three-dimensional teaching and learning. This will help those teachers who are not science majors. Training will take place in June and July, and planning days will be set up in the summer. Special ed and ELL teachers will be part of the training as well. This would be a three-year adoption, because we want to review it in the spring of twenty-twenty-one, and the cost is two hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And that includes the kits, and it's actually, this total cost is actually less than the average cost of a hundred and twenty thousand per grade level. So that was good news. The second item on the agenda, as a follow-up to our April meeting, we went over some questions regarding dyslexia that we have asked to review for our next meeting, which our next meeting will be Monday, June eleventh, at six P.M. in the Oshkosh, right here in this room. And then, future meeting agendas, we have put on a few things here. We would like to get a mental health overview at some point, along with an update on the School-to-Work program that was recently launched, and peer coach summary as well. And so, next meeting, June eleventh, at six P.M. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other committee reports?
Yep, I have one.
Special.
My report relates to the policy and governance meeting that took place on May third, right after the education committee meeting. It was attended by myself, Dr. Herzog, Stephanie Kelly, and several administration staff members as well. We covered kind of one policy item, and then just had a guest who was there to talk about policy, how we, where we, where we get our direction from in policy. So the first agenda item was, one that we're gonna be covering tonight, was the addition of adding public forums, agenda-related and non-agenda-related public forums to our agenda order. And we'll cover that tonight in tonight's meeting as well. But the other was, our guest was Richard Zeeman. He's an associate with, with Neola. Neola is an organization, a policy service that we partner with, and that many districts throughout the state and the United States partner with, to provide policies that are changing throughout the country and throughout the state. And so, so many times, we're working on stuff that they've provided us that, that may need to be updated or might not, might not need to be updated, depending on where we are within, within relation to that. He indicated that he's not an attorney, but just provides support for Neola, but that all of the policies that come out of Neola back to the districts are vetted by roughly twenty-seven different attorneys throughout the state of Wisconsin and everything. He talked about the process of how a policy, the steps that a policy goes through to get to, essentially get to the board for adoption. And I believe there was, I think there was like sixteen different, sixteen, between sixteen and twenty different steps that were taking place. Talked about the user, the usability between, regarding our website and their website in regards to board docs, how it's easy for us to find templates, what other districts are using, what they have for examples and such as well. Indicated that they update their policies that they promote to the districts twice a year, once in June and once in July.
June and July?
Sorry, June and December.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
They were a little farther apart.
Yep. And, yeah, I, I think that pretty much covers that. So, and then, our next meeting is scheduled for May seventeenth this month at ten A.M.
Thank you very much. Are there any other committee reports? All right, then, let's move into the workshop. Our first workshop is the Oshkosh Area School District Education Foundation, with Kim Brown and Burke Tower joining us tonight.
All right, and Burke is joining me tonight. We've been very blessed by the Oshkosh for Education, is that they really wanna get behind and help us build a proper board. We have a great board, but we're really looking for a diverse board. And so, part of that was to come together and have an Oshkosh for Education Subcommittee. And Burke is part of that Subcommittee and has been doing some research on some boards and helping support with some of those pieces. So, he'll be here tonight, talking about some of those pieces, or anything that I might miss, 'cause, you know, it's Burke, when Burke talks. All right. So, a little bit of history, some of you remember that we started this in the spring of two thousand eleven, where Brad, Jared Darsky, and myself were charged to take a look at starting to get a board started. And so, the very first steps we did is we went to different districts that had very strong established foundations. And we went to Appleton, Wausau, Winnic, Winnicottany, and Whitefish Bay. And we spent either an hour to a half a day with each of those folks to learn a little bit more. We then started putting together a few more people, and Tom McDermott and Jim Chitwood joined us right away, along with Tim Dolish. And they were our initial foundation group. It was great to have Tom McDermott on there, 'cause he used all of his law skills to help us write our bylaws. When I say he helped, he did the bylaws for us. So, we were very fortunate to have his skills there. And then, of course, Jim has been with us through the whole thing, and has been very wise in helping give direction. We created a mission, a vision, in the bylaws. And then, we went out and we brought in all of the scholarships, because the scholarships were in, like, in all the different schools and somewhere in the community foundation, but we brought them all under the OSD Education Foundation. If you are wondering about where we are, I did send that to all of you, so that you have a breakdown of what we have currently as of Monday this week in our OSD Education Foundation. So. Things that we have done since we started, the very first year that Brad and I started, we tried to do a calendar fundraiser. It was sort of successful, but it didn't bring in quite the money that we needed to. But our committee came together and talked about what was gonna be the signature event for the OSD Education Foundation. And where we all landed was a trivia night. We thought that went well with, you know, being a, a school education foundation with the trivia. And we started, the first year was at Oshkosh West, then we moved it to Oshkosh North, and then we moved it to another location because, to Beckett's, because we wanted to have the feedback we had received, as they were looking for a place outside of the school to maybe let their hair down a little bit. The other piece that we've been doing is a payroll deduction ask with all of our employees. And you'll see the, the funds that are raised there are actually in acorn funds, and so we'll look at that in a moment. The awareness that we've done is we've done a retiree breakfast. We've done one every year since Oaklawn opened. What we found out last year at the retiree breakfast is that many of them didn't know that when we held those at the schools, that that was actually for our OSD Education Foundation. They thought it was for Oaklawn, or for Webster Middle, or wherever the school was. They thought it was the school PTO putting it on, even though we talked about the Education Foundation. So, that was a really good thing to find out this year, that there wasn't communication on that piece. So I think we're doing a better job there. But we had that at Alumni Center, and we're going to continue that in the fall, having it there. And then, of course, having our strategic plan, and that's just something we've been sharing out. You also know we have a strategic plan, because it's part of our OSD strategic plan under six. So, our finances, our unrestricted funds are now at seventeen thousand eight hundred and seventeen dollars. Our last OSD trivia night has added to that piece. Our designated funds at five hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, which is fabulous, but those are designated funds for certain pieces. We have our scholarship funds at fifteen thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars, and then our acorn funds, which is really from payroll deductions, at eleven thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars. So, our, our big goal is, of course, to build all the funds, but the main fund that we need to build is around unrestricted funds. And part of it is to continue funding the teacher grants that all of you know about, but the other piece is really what, we wanna help support major projects in the district. And we're not going to do that until we get the unrestricted fund well beyond. So, one of our opportunities this year, you've seen, is the match for MAC two thousand eighteen match campaign. And this has been fabulous. There is a donor that has said that they would be willing to match up to twenty thousand dollars. And so, currently, we have efforts going forth. Katie has done a fabulous job of putting this out there on social media. I've seen several of you also share that on social media, so thank you, getting the word out, and really helping us have this special fundraising opportunity to help build up that unrestricted fund will be key. Currently, Oshkosh for Education, as I've shared, is helping us to establish a more complete board, including the current OSD Education Foundation board members. Recently, we joined the National School Foundation Association to learn more about foundations from across the United States. And that was actually Burke's idea, to take a look and, and learn from others who have very established boards, and to go outside of Wisconsin. And then, we, we shared briefly the strategic plan for our OSD Education Foundation. We believe that our next steps is to take a look at hiring somebody at maybe a .25 as a FTE director. And the reason we say this is because the, the foundations, the school foundations, we have found that are very successful, where they are well into, well beyond a million dollars, is they had somebody who started out, who they were the voice, they were going out and sharing the big piece that we know, we know, is that people who can get out to community and explain about leaving their estate, or a piece of their estate, and establishing those relationships, that's the best way to help grow a foundation. But we, we don't have the manpower right now to have somebody really going out and creating those relationships. We have the trivia night as a signature event, which is wonderful. We raise between three and four thousand dollars each year. We do believe that we need a signature event that could maybe be a really big event that could really help that, that, our unrestricted funds. So, that, that is going to be our ask coming up in the next couple of weeks, is to take a look at that piece.
I just had a couple of things here. I serve on the Oshkosh for Education group, and all of you know we try to be supportive of what goes on, along with being a body that can communicate to the school system and district people, and things that we hear out there, and also get feedback, because communication, as you know, from the school system and the community is one of the, one of the biggest issues. I used to work for the city, we had the same, same problem there. And as you recall, last year, the, the big project... And as you recall, last year, the big project that we took on, besides kind of the, the general work of Oshkosh for Education, was the Curb Project, which was a mammoth project, was highly successful and took an incredible amount of time. We provided the leadership, but it was people throughout the community pitched in, all they had to ask, and it was, it was a great project. But it was a beginning and a middle and an end to it, and we wanted that, that to be clear. So, this year, one thing Beth Wyman did, who sort of served as, as the chair, was she asked the, the school district, you know, what kinds of things might be needed? How might we be helpful to the school system? We periodically asked that question. But you can imagine what came back was a list of, how about money for this, 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 how about money for this. It was a list of, could you get us money here, here, there, here? I mean, that, that was the list. Beth and I had a couple other we're talking, and said, really, the Oshkosh for Education is not a fundraiser. That's, that can't be our job, going out and raising funds and year to year taking on a new fundraising project. But we said, you know, what might be some, something that we could at least help with, help get started, look down, that might connect to that and still be part of the strategic plan. As you know, as part of your strategic plan is the development of a foundation. And while there is a foundation here, it's, it's limited in scope, quite frankly. It's got a nice asset base, but they're designated, there's not much in unrestricted funds. A fundraising each year is an awful lot of work for not a lot of money, quite frankly. And so we were talking, we said, well, maybe I'd see if we could come up with some sort of a foundation. I think in terms of, it broadened the foundation there and look into long term towards where we might even have an endowment for the system. But that's gonna, gonna take some, a good deal of work. So, we started thinking, a group of us got together, Kevin, Katie were very much part of that, Beth and Bill, and Cheryl Fowler, and Amy Albright. Who put together a couple of ideas. One was, we said, we need to broaden the board to be a bigger board and a board that could be helpful in terms of fundraising and going out, just not work on a, on a project that raised no more than funds. So, we put together what might be a structure for a board based on who was already on the board. And another one, it actually began to put some names to it, who haven't been asked. So, that was one thing we said, we need a broad board to bring different types of people in the community, represent, and yet have some ability to go out and maybe make some decent ask with, with somebody. The second thing was, I did a lot of research on foundations throughout the country. There's a big national association that represents literally hundreds of, of school foundations. And one of the largest is in Orange County in, in Orlando, Florida, which I'd ring a bell with you. In fact, this, the idea's been mentioned to Dr. Cartwright. And we said, but there has to be somebody with a focus. It, it can't really just be another task that, that Kim has during the day. So, we said, maybe we can ask at a quarter of position, and then put the board together. Maybe the board might even participate in the selection process. The person would be part of, part of the school district. And, and see where we can go in the next year. It's a loose idea at this point, but at least it, it has some direction, some focus. So, really, the alternatives are to stay where you are now with the foundation, which is, can't wait out.
Slow growing.
Unrestricted funds and all this list of, we need money for this, this, and this, particularly things that broaden students. It's not going to be about building buildings or anything like that. It's going to be programs for teachers or particular projects that help students broaden and increase their opportunity base out there. So, that's, that's sort of what we have in mind. Need a little help with having somebody who's going to be focused because I don't think we're going to get the board to come in and commit unless there's somebody they know is going to have some degree of focus. Twenty-five percent during the first year, we can see where it goes. I would hope to have an opportunity that where maybe after a first year, might get to a point where the funds that are raised help pay for that position to go beyond twenty-five percent. Maybe it doesn't go very far. I don't know. But you, you would hope over time that you'd raise money that would support the position. But that, that kind of money's not there. Did have the idea and worked with people also, school district, and coming up with something is a nice signature event is, is Stan's kind of retirement party. I don't know what you're labeling it as, but it's kind of a, a leaving party. Whatever it is, a, a party with Stan, as you saw, it'll find somebody who's willing to put up some money, which is fairly substantial. We can match that, that would already be a big, big step up. So, we're looking for help in terms of getting a quarter of a position. You know, your alternatives are to stay where you are now. This, this has some risk attached to it, obviously has some risk. But I think it's fairly limited risk, because I think we ought to be able to recover the money anyway that would get some money and then get others committed. So, that's kind of where we stand right now.
The Appleton Area School District started with a quarter position. And the next year, it moved to a halftime position because they were able to bring in. And then, I don't remember if it was within two years, she was full-time and had that funding. And then eventually, there was enough funding in the foundation to pay her salary and assistance. So, but they've grown well beyond. I mean, they were ten million seven years ago. So, you know, so they're, they're in a very different place than we are. But they started where we were twenty years ago, twenty-five years ago now.
Yes. Two of the things we had to mention, obviously, we'd work with the foundation, use the foundation resources, the Oshkosh Area Community Foundation, like we have in the past, as a, as a holding place.
Yes.
And Oshkosh for Education would basically be out of it once this thing got up and gets started.
Correct.
It's not going to run it or, or manage it or anything like that. So, that's where we are.
Got any questions from anyone?
Thank you for your report. I, I hope before we get to a point of voting on this one that we find out what the other positions are out there. This is usually that time of year where we start being asked for adding a position here or a partial position there. Just in the last week, I've heard from folks in the science area, I've heard from people in reading, I've heard from people in the arts. So, I don't know if there's more out there or if those are formalized or those are someone's hopes and dreams about next year's budget. But we, I, I'd like to have all those positions brought forward first before we start piecemealing. I, I think you make a very compelling case, but I'd like to know what else is out there before we, we start.
I understand that. The one thing is, is that we probably won't go a lot further in terms of putting together the board until some.
Right. Well, I don't think.
We're ready to move. If you're ready to move, we're ready to move, but we're waiting until.
A lot of administration brings us.
So, there is a sequence to this.
Excuse me, if administration brings us those other requests for next year, we can move faster. So, the sooner they bring them, the sooner we can act, I think.
Fantastic.
I don't, I don't know if we have any ask for, he says, I think there's a lot of wishes out there.
Okay, well, maybe that's what I was hearing this week.
And then looking over the exec team, if anybody knows of any additional positions? Okay.
But we can confirm that.
Yeah, we will confirm.
We should, we should triple check and make sure there's nothing sitting in the weeds, that you don't prove something like this and all of a sudden three other positions show up.
And maybe somebody's watching the board meeting tonight who are going to email us and say, hey.
Oh, I thought you meant they'd write a check.
That would be great, too. If anybody's watching and would like to help support the foundation.
People have questions. I'm always available. I, I know most of you don't really interacted much with Kelly, but the rest of you have interacted with on various levels at various times.
Sorry to circle back here. May I ask a couple of questions as we go on here? Not in a specific way, but in a general sense. Is it the case with the foundations listed in your site visits that if a foundation, say, has a hundred fifty thousand dollars in payroll costs for a given year, they're raising three or four, six, three hundred thousand dollars a year, that's well beyond it?
Yeah, because you really want to get to an endowment where the interest off of that is helping pay for the positions so that we continue growing. I mean, that is where we need to get.
And it's pretty good precedent for that, if I assume right. One other question, I would, I would, I'm just imagining being in the position of making the ask. And I would think overwhelmingly donors might say, public schools, well, you have, that's why we have taxpayers, right? It'd be a much harder ask than a animal shelter or maybe a boys' and girls' club. Right? Have you run into that? Or do you have any sense, or could you speak to that, that inherently there's, I would think, a bit of a hurdle to cross, given the perception that maybe, and I could be all wrong, why are you asking for money? Because you guys are funded. Are people talking about that in the education circles? Or is that, maybe I'm the only one?
I don't think there are discussions that are, there've been that much in the way of discussions about it, to tell you the truth. I'm sure that that will be a response from some. So, it would be based on, you know, if we get somebody in with the board, we have putting together the story, putting together the, the case study that says, this is why we need it. It would take some work, and that's going to be one of the most important things. When you do something like that in your marketing, as you're marketers, you figure out what the objections are going to be. You put together your case study to deal with the objections beforehand. Because that's, that's a very obvious kind of one that's, that's probably going to get raised. And I, I think there are stories that could be put together, case.
That's obviously.
Case studies, it could be done, you're a marketing guy.
And I think you heard tonight from National History, they're raising money for those students. I know that if you go to any concert, they're constantly asking, we need to replace this, we have this need, this need, and this need. I asked the music department, well, Julie and I asked the music department to put down all of their needs. It was well over a million dollars. And that's, that's something that isn't part of what we have funding for. And so I think this is really going beyond the needs of what taxpayers are paying for. And so, there is a real need to have something very well established.
I guess, and what, you've answered a question, what's the, what's the central compelling, it's not one, but a compelling message that makes the case clearly.
Correct. And I think.
And to give a.
And that would be developed.
Has to be put together.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Would there be any possibility, Burke, you had said that this would be, I mean, it's a risky, you know, thing to do. Could we put goals on this? If we do hire or bring in a point two-five full-time, and they have, and I don't know a lot about foundations, obviously, but do a realistic goal that if they hit this goal at this time, that, that they would be paid through the foundation. And if we don't get to that point, then, then we have to look at new options for that position. You know, if there's some kind of, is that part of your strategic plan at all of where, where you're going with that? Would that be something that we could look at to maybe approve the position quicker? Is if we had some kind of goal attached to, you know, who we put in that position? Like you said, that we would be part of that discussion, but to have a goal attained of that, if they don't hit this goal or, or hit what, you know, what their job description is, or put monetary to it, then we have to reexamine, or the board for the Oshkosh Foundation would reexamine that certain position being paid through the district. Or, does, does that make sense?
Are you saying that we would pay them, but we would have to reevaluate that after a year if they don't meet their said mark?
Exactly.
That's what you're saying, correct?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think that's.
In a better way, yeah.
I think it'd be hard to set a goal for the first year. I think you have to evaluate.
I'm not saying, I'd say three years, maybe five years, something, yeah.
I, I would think if you go the first year, then after the first year, then you set the goal, do we continue with this or not? I think it's a fairly low-risk proposition, dollar-wise, the first year. The second year, that makes more sense. Plus, we know how the, the board will be functioning and things like that.
Right, yeah.
So, the, the concept is good, but I wouldn't want to do that the first year and bring somebody in quarter time and say, you got to raise fifty thousand dollars. First of all, they, they may not accept the position, not knowing what the history, the history lesson is. So, the concept is good, but I think it comes after the first year. And I think there'd be a reevaluation by the end of the first year. Would be the way to do it. That would be my advice.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, my, my first question, what's, so what if we were, what if the foundation and the district were to split the cost down the middle for the position? So, what is it, roughly eighteen?
Well, we have seventeen thousand dollars in our foundation.
Good.
And that, that's the only, that's what we have in our unrestricted funds. The rest are all.
Got it. So, Nick's that idea. So, I understand, I understand that. So.
And Bob, that's kind of the bottom line issue. You look at the foundation, it's asset levels up here, but its unrestricted funds are down here. So, realistically, there's, there's not funds.
There's not much that they can do with it, other than what they, what they have designated. So, I get that, oh, now I lost my other question. Go ahead.
Anyone else?
That was great.
If you think of that, Bob, maybe you can contact Kim or Burke, and I'm sure they'll be able to answer it for you. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thanks, we got, thanks for your quick, yeah, Katie.
Very good. Thank you.
Actually, I just remembered. Sorry, Burke.
He's already standing up.
Have to move faster.
So, the, so my, my question is, is that this is a quarter-time position. What pool of people are we going to be searching for to fill a quarter-time position? So, who wants to, who wants to stab at that one?
Well, I think it's going to be somebody that that's something that resonates with them, that this is something I want to go out and do. I don't know who the pool of people will be. There is, I, there are some ideas that we had of people who are very passionate and have some energy around things, but I don't know if they would be interested in spending some time. But it's going to probably be somebody who doesn't have a full-time job right now that can truly spend their time.
I picture like a private consultant, someone that would, you know, do this stuff, but doesn't do it, you know, does it on a consulting basis or something.
That could be a type, we don't know exactly. We just, a quarter position's about all we are willing to say in the beginning. And we would think that you could put money into it at a low risk. So, there was nothing magical about a quarter position, nobody in particular. We know we need somebody, we know we need some focus. And our hope is that we could find someone, have them recruited. I was at the university for lots of part-time people for things. Somehow or another, when you get into it, there are people out there.
At that point, I, I know, this is something else. I wasn't going to say anything, but it is a good point that in seven years, we've done little to nothing, which has yielded little to nothing. We're looking at a quarter FTE. And I wonder if maybe flipping that and saying, we are going to do it this time, and we're going to do it seriously, and we're going to get somebody, and we're going to put some muscle into it. A quarter, to me, doesn't seem like much more than nothing. And it's in a criticism, but I wonder if a better approach would be, we're either going to do it or we're not going to do it. And if we're going to do it, then by golly, you know, we're going to do it. And, and if we do that, then the caliber of the person that we're, that we're seeking will show up. I don't know too many people that, even if they're passionate, that will do this. But if we need to find some serious cash, then maybe we need to put more eggs in that basket.
I think that's a discussion you all have to have, because, you know, my first goal was fifty percent becoming and asking for fifty percent position at this point in time. So, I mean, that's a good discussion for you. The more FTE you put into it, the higher the risk, the more likelihood of success, I think. So, we know it can't be zero. You're not going to get a board to go out and do this.
Yeah, and that didn't work.
It can't be zero, you know, what, you know, full-time position would be great.
It almost seems like a point two-five would be even a waste.
I mean, it could be a quarter, a third, a half. I mean, there'd be no reason to make more than a half, I think, for the first year.
I mean, I think if we were to, to just get a full-time, but I don't know. But my point was that this seems like we're playing, we're still playing small. And I wonder what it would be like if we were to broaden that.
I might just add to Ms. Garner's comment. Early on in my time on the board, I had a conversation with the Development Director for Minnesota Public Radio, and their numbers, the ratio ranged from four to ten times sales rep's annual salary in revenue produced. So, there is precedent for people bringing in dramatically many more times than their salary. And you wonder if you poach somebody, for example, like that.
And I think this also aligns with our strategic plan as something where we wanted to find solutions. And Allison, yours was, are we going to find solution for revenue instead of cutting? We're trying to find revenue solutions.
More fun to bring in money than just to cut.
You know, half would make more sense than a quarter, but I'll let you people struggle with that, you in the school district. We do know to recruit a board and get a board to get some things, we're going to have, they're going to have to have somebody who is out doing some things so that they don't say, oh, am I going to have to be doing this?
That'll raise the level of, of the people you recruit to that board as well.
Absolutely.
Yes.
And so, I'll let you think.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I think I'm hearing some folks lean in the direction of entertaining, at least, with the rest of the list, if there is one, of other requested positions for next year, but looking at this one as a, perhaps a halftime position.
Halftime or full-time, yeah.
Okay, all right. Then, moving on to workshop item number two, no time to lose. You had received a copy of this document sometime last fall, I believe. And then, again, this week, mine may look different from yours because my colored ink cartridge, cartridge was running out. It turned out, red rather than blue, like the other one. This is a document that I've had a chance to take a look at on a couple of occasions. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards Board has looked at this on at least two occasions. And I attended a workshop sponsored by that group last November where Luther Olson, who is one of the twenty-eight lawmakers from across the country, who was a co-author of this, had an opportunity to speak. This is really, tonight is really the first of a two-section or session approach to this in that Doc, Mr. Olson has been invited to come before this board, but we're trying to figure out a date. And also looking to bring in Dan Rossmiller, the governmental liaison with the Wisconsin Association of School Boards to give us some additional background, because there's supposed to be another document that accompanies this one. But essentially, as written in the staff report, this came about because of nationally, our fifteen-year-olds weren't performing as well as some thought they should, not only on an international examination, but also on the NAEP or the National Association of Educational Progress. but also on the NAPE or the National Association of Educational Progress. And so this group of twenty-eight lawmakers has assembled, they've gone to several places around the world. And then at the, there, as you noticed, there, there are quite a few references generally to what high-powered school systems have. And then at the very back, you read about Finland, Ontario, and Singapore. And so the assignment for tonight was to read this and then to come prepared to entertain some sample questions as under item G, under major points, or if you have some other direction you want to take this. But it seemed to me that with some conversations this board has had over time, in large part thanks to Steve Eliasen bringing us ideas from Canada. And we had an opportunity to interact with a gentleman in March of this year and from other parts of the world. To me, this, this more or less came together with the notion that we may not be Singapore, we may not be Finland, but we can be the best Oshkosh school district we can be. And what is it about Oshkosh that we can continue to improve on to reach some of those goals that have been expressed, that we want to be first in our, in our athletic conference? Or we want to be a destination district? And we want to make sure that we're, that when we say all children, we mean all children. So what are some things? Because as David Langford, who was a expert, as it were, in quality improvement, a disciple of W. Edwards Deming, who helped turn around the economy of Japan after World War II, we're all in charge of something, and we're in charge of this school district. So what can we do in this school district to make this an even better school district? So that's kind of where I'm coming from on this. And you can take this in whatever directions you want, you wish to take it. But I wanted to open up some dialogue. We've opened, we've often had people say, oh, I wish the board could come together and talk about something. Here's an opportunity to talk about something. So you don't have to relate exactly to what's in this document. If this has spurred other ideas for you, that's fine. But I, I wanted to provide a venue tonight where you could have an open dialogue on things of interest to you in terms of improving our district. So that's, that's kind of where we are. So who would ever like to start? Go ahead.
I'd like to start first and foremost with a thank you to Dr. Herzog for advancing this document, this train of thought, this dialogue, this initiative to, to be to this point. That's, I think, huge and commendable. Thank you. That's it? That's all I've got.
No, that ain't true. Give me thirty seconds. So one of the things that, that struck me as I was reading through this is that they've, what these folks did, the people that wrote the report, the reason that I found it so helpful is they gave us a blueprint. They're, they're vague, yeah? There's like ten or twelve elements, and they're relatively vague, but it's a blueprint. And so basically what they've done is they've gone out and studied best practices all over the world, and they've come back and they've sort of, this is what we see in common all across, every single one. Here's the twelve things that we see in each of these places. So what would it be like for us to consider those as we move forward? We don't have to do all twelve, maybe we pick the top three, I don't know. But we're not recreating or reinventing the wheel. They've done all of the hard work, and they've come back and they've kind of given us this gift.
Well, they said that, that all of them are not the same, that they all picked, they borrowed and adapted ideas from each of them. And even from us, and then they.
Yeah. Most of their ideas were from America.
From America, yeah.
And then they adapted them, and they found them to be really successful. It, it seems like we could do that, too. It's not easy, it's going to be messy and all of those things, but that doesn't mean that we can't do it. So that, that's where I landed, like, man, they kind of like gave it to us on a silver platter. Let's do something about it.
On my paper, I thought it looked, you know, looked great. But in reality, I don't think the political climate is going to allow us to do anything. One of the things that they do is they, you know, pay their teachers on par with engineers and some of these places. And our, our political system is not going to allow that to happen. They increase the requirements for teaching where it's.
How does the political system determine what we pay our teachers?
Because they have cut our budget for the last.
We can pay teachers wherever we want, though. I'm, I'm not saying it's easy.
Well, you can pay teachers where you want, but then you're not going to have.
But they don't, but the politics don't determine how we pay our teachers.
We could not pay what these teachers are making in those, those systems that are highlighted here.
We actually pay above OECD average. Now, maybe not as high as Finland, but across the European community, higher performing, they pay lower. So, I mean, it, the devil's in details, right, on all the specifics of this data.
My point was that the politics, that we can't control that, but we can control what we do in Oshkosh. And we can pay teachers anything we want. There's no law, there's no policies, there's nothing that says there is a ceiling, we can't go over it. I'm not advocating that we go over it, but there, it's not, that's something where we don't get to control.
I'll let that be. But just the general disrespect that the politicians give to education in general is a big role to do this. You're not going to, you have to change that. And I don't see that happening right now.
This document was really intended for state legislators to do things and not piecemeal, but right, holistically. And Jim, I think is, I think you're both right. Jim is right in that unless the state changes its approach, excuse me, to school funding, there's not going to be, there won't be the dollars out there to pay teachers in the same way that Finland and some of these other places are. So that may be something that we can't control, but what can we address? And I think that's, that's a point to start from. I did bring two documents with me tonight that I've come across in the last year or so. The first one comes from CISA Six. I think I've shared this on one other occasion with you. It's called Plan on a Page, and it comes from Ted Nitsky, who is the director of CISA Six. This is essentially their strategic plan, and there are document, many documents behind this. But you'll see that the goals are, are focused, key measures of success are, are measurable. They meet the smart goal criteria. For example, if you look under customer and stakeholder engagement, they want to improve stakeholder and internal, internal and external stakeholder satisfaction and improve, improve employee engagement. And they talk about how to do that. Turnover of less than ten percent. Ninety percent of people responding to a survey would say they're highly satisfied or satisfied all across the board. And so they have some very specific metrics as to how they're going to reach that. This other one I picked up recently, I had the opportunity to attend the Wisconsin PTA State Convention. And their keynote speaker was from Janesville, which was where the convention was held. This was put together by their superintendent, who's in their second year. This is their strategic plan, and they have about ten thousand students. So numbers-wise, they're very close to Oshkosh. And you'll see numbers again. So if you look at the section on student success, every student's going to be known by their name, their strength, and their need by at least one adult in that building. Ninety percent of third graders are going to read at or above grade level. Ninety percent of ninth graders will successfully complete Algebra II. These are some really lofty goals and would really raise the bar in terms of student performance and expectations. You can read through the rest of the list there. But very, I was very impressed with, with both of these because there are documents behind these. And yet, on one page, you can pull this up on the website, you can get this information, you know, in a couple of clicks. And it's a district that I believe has somewhat similar demographics to ours in terms of free and reduced lunch and in terms of students of color and students of disability. So I think there are some things we could look at in terms of a focus. And that, that's often what it takes, is a focus on something to, to improve things. Steve, you brought us the opportunity to listen to the gentleman from Canada, whose name I'm sorry, I've forgotten.
It's Ron Canuel.
Rod?
Ron. Ron Canuel.
Canuel, thank you. And I know you also talked at that time about there being a conference in May. And we never really did any follow-up on that. So I don't know if that could be part of this conversation. But to me, it seems like it's part of that broad picture of continuous improvement, so.
And given that they were one of the top ones in.
Ontario, yeah.
And they score really well. I know scores aren't the only thing, but for us to have the opportunity to be able to be a part of that partnership, that just seems like another, like here it is on a silver platter. Are we going to take it? Are we going to take advantage of that opportunity? And what are we going to do with it?
I agree fully. The year-end event in Toronto is May thirty-first, so we are getting close, but it's still doable. We are welcome to be at that event. So the, the, it sounds like keynote event is the Alternative High School Skateboard Factory, favored by Justin Bieber.
Yeah.
Funded by Toronto Dominion Bank. It sounds like a marvelous celebration. And I, I'm intrigued by the organization across the board as they celebrate forty top principals across Canada. Of course, I can't help but thinking, what would it be like if we began recruiting in part in small measure from the number two, three, or four educational system in the world?
Yes.
Four hundred and fifty miles away from us?
Mm-hmm.
And those sorts of things. Can I back up, though, just a minute?
Sure.
Is a central question that we need to ask. Can we be a top educational system in the world or in the nation or in the state or in the region? And I think specifically of the multiple conversations I've had with the former Theta Care CEO, Dean Gruner. And he's recounted in rather rigorous detail how they went from being not the best to the best. And ultimately, as measured nationally, among top four finalists for community health improvement. And also recounting their close engagement with Kimberly School District, how they went from lackluster twenty-five years ago to a top school district. There's a very deliberate plan, but before there's a plan, there's a very deliberate belief they could be at the top. Top's our goal, and that's where we're going. And every effort will lead to that end. And I, that's a question that I have for our district without an answer. But I, I'll keep going if I can.
Go ahead.
But it was one of the striking things when I first was elected to the board, that I came from the world of advertising photography with a studio in Appleton, right, not that far away. But our focus was absolutely the top-level photography globally, right? So didn't mean that we worked in London every day, but occasionally we did. And didn't mean that we hired from London always, but occasionally, people went on to work in London or New York. And we hired from the top schools mostly. And we were, the whole mindset was, they're doing that in London, we've got to be there or better, right? That was absolutely the, the goal and focus. And we had a very successful organization as a result. And I, I was struck in my time in the district where looking at London was not part of the mindset and part of the worldview. And often it would be shared that we're not in London, right? But I think it would be helpful if we had that mindset, that what's the best work, you know, going on in the world? And we set our sights there.
I think that's easy to do after you read this article, that I think there was always that notion, and it's an old notion, that the US had the best education system. And it's proven over and over again, we don't. So we have to have that open mindset that maybe looking outside our own country, our own backyard for, for innovations, for best practices, you know, to bring, you know, and it's not always the people. It's bringing ideas or bringing innovations or bringing in practices that our people can do, you know, to grow, grow ourselves. There, you know, reading, if you read the article or even watch the news, you can understand that our students are not up to par. They're in the middle of the pack. And, you know, thirty years ago, we definitely were not there. We were much higher. So I think it is, you do need to look at, you know, it's, it's business. You need to look at your better areas that have, are moved and have done different practices and use those, adapt those, and, and move into that direction. So it's not, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's an, an appropriate thing to not look at. I think it's an inappropriate thing not to look at that when you're in the middle of the pack.
A question might be, should our comparable districts include Helsinki and Hamilton, Ontario, and fill in the blank, right, in addition to Appleton and Warsaw, right? I feel like that's always in the background when we have conversations about how we're doing. Comparables are great, but the elephant in the room is sort of what's the rest of the world doing?
I don't know, I think how they train their teachers and how it's only ten percent make it into a teaching program full-time. And we're begging for people to go into teaching here.
Absolutely.
I don't know how we can compare ourselves with, with these top, as things are right now, I think it'd be unfair for us to be trying to see, compare ourselves with Ontario and Singapore and stuff with just that difference in training teachers. That was one of many things.
What if we started on a path? What if we set a given number of our candidates or teaching professionals are going to go through advanced training in top Canadian educational training universities or Finnish schools or wherever the, the best work is being done? That we begin that process, if not wholesale, in small measure?
Develop our own, kind of. Start to develop, yeah.
There's a way to get there.
Yeah.
And it won't be easy, and it's gonna, it's gonna require jumping over hurdles, for sure. Because if it was easy, we would have done it already. And it's not easy, and it's not obvious. Okay. That's the hand of cards we got. Doesn't mean that we don't play.
Had a campaign of deliberately recruiting candidates from top-performing countries around the world. It might be New Zealand, I'm not sure, but we know a few of them. Please report.
I don't know why somebody from New Zealand would, would come here when, when we're paying a third of what they're going to be making in New Zealand.
Is that a fact?
Country-by-country basis, probably, we'd have to assess that, right? I don't know.
Two-thirds.
So one thing that I like about what you're saying, Steve, is the commitment to greatness. Are we a school district that is willing to say, we're going to be great? We're not going to be good enough, we're going to be the best. But are we willing to say that? I am willing to say that. I am willing, because I think we can. But I think overcoming that hurdle of, of the, the feeling that, you know, we're not as good as Kimberly, and we're not as good as these surrounding districts, and we don't have the resources, we can't compete, that just has to go away. We have to say, we are, we can do this. I, I believe that we can.
And it's frustrating because they are so good, and I've heard this through the half of the state. They are so good. They are the best because they keep taking our best.
Right.
So we have the best.
Start by poaching.
Yeah, we have the best. Right, poaching our own back. So we have the best. So I, I don't know that we need to go out recruiting and bringing in. What about looking at, we have some really magnificent people and taking them and saying, hey, do you want to take a trip? Do you want to go learn something? Why don't you go, you know, and bring back these best practices that Canada, Ontario, or someplace are doing and moving? And then that's just about, you know, providing a trip, and that's personal development for people we already have. Or bringing in a consultant, like you did with, you know, the Canadian and all of, Don, right?
Ron.
Ron. We're really terrible. Bringing in Ron.
I hope he's not watching.
I know. So, you know, those, it's, like you said, it's doable. It is absolutely doable. We just got to work out the kinks and get through the mess.
Well, we have to be, we have to commit.
Just committing.
That's right.
We're doing it.
It starts by committing.
Yeah.
And then once we're committed, then we figure it out. But until the seven of us are committed, and then we have the administration committed, then we don't move.
Right.
It's got to be deliberate. That's what Steve is saying, and I agree. We have to, you know, there's so many excuses of why we're not doing this and why we can't compete with this. And those just have to go away. We just have to say, we're going to do it, whatever it takes.
What would it be like for this board to create something like this?
For us?
We already have something that you voted on.
We ain't got, whoa.
No, not in a million years. Ninety percent of third graders?
No, the, the number may be different, but the actual, we have eighty-five percent of third graders.
You mean these goals, not this strategic plan? You're talking about these kind of goals.
Every student is known by name, strength, and need by at least one. I mean, these are lofty. These are like our goals, but nudged up. Like, what if we could start with that? I mean, these are like, wow.
Or what if we just hit the goals that we have?
If you're going to focus on, I mean, remember, defining what greatness is, is going to be a key piece.
It's got to be huge. What is success?
Are you going to say greatness is only literacy?
No.
Are you going to say, is it broader than that? So that's important to identify, because whatever shows up on the sheet is going to be the focal point, and we'll laser in on that like crazy, right? So, so be mindful of wherever, wherever that target is set, we'll hit that target.
Right.
We'll aim at that target. The second piece is going to be a fiscal reality, and Jim kind of hit on that one. And I agree with the idea of setting a, a, you know, people, people will not give you resources without a plan, without a goal. Right? You can't just say, hey, once we get resources, we'll figure out something cool to do with it. So it really is a focal point of identifying those and, and having a series, a, a metrics and a scorecard, which we, we have our scorecard in place, and we can go ahead and change those. That was voted on a short time ago. But we can bring those up, review those, and say, okay, how do they compare to this? That was voted on a short time ago, but we can bring those up, review those, and say, okay, how do they compare to this? Do we wanna add some in? Are we sure it's a comprehensive list per what you and the community feel you want and need? I think there's a big important part of it, too, is remembering your strategic plan really was vetted outside of the district by the entire community and was filtered down to us.
Absolutely.
So, so I don't think you wanna lose that connection.
No, right.
So, those pieces built together would work out really, really well. But then the fiscal piece is gonna have to come in at some point, because people can say that all the, nobody's gonna get behind the components if there isn't some way to potentially fund them. So, I think it's kind of a one-two punch. Now, I do agree that there's nothing in the legislature that says you cannot raise the revenue or do these things. There's just a specific vehicle with which you have to do it, that in this state, at this time, happens to be referent.
Or our educational.
Foundation, which is another piece that you just talked about.
Well, I'm sure that Dr. Cartwright is watching this meeting, and hopefully, you know, when she comes and brings her ideas to the table. Yes, maybe she will be willing to commit to greatness with us, and I hope that she will. And I'm sure she'll have some new ideas and new perspectives, so I look forward to that very much.
And I would suggest, too, that, for example, in fiscal realities, we likely have to think about the way they're, in a much broader way, and challenge some existing paradigms. For example, in the world I refer to of advertising photography and architecture, I know it's the same. Top graduates from top schools go to work for a top architect for nothing.
Yes.
Right? And so, we could say, we're gonna be the top district in the country, and the top guys from Harvard Education, School of Education are gonna come here and do an intern year, and nothing, and we, we close a big financial gap there. Now, we're not gonna do that next year, right? But the precedent is there. Also, when I was, sorry, in Northfield for the Torch program, I mean, there was a, there was a living example. Top schools from Carleton University, working for a few bucks an hour, on call twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and absolutely burying the success scale. So, top students, no money, endless work, absolutely moving students, so the model is there.
And there's loads of models like that all over the US, in education, in public education.
Yes.
Yeah, so it is possible.
Absolutely.
And I'm certainly not, not against this, I think everybody knows this should be our goal. But the number one roadblock is changing the political climate. When you still have representatives saying, well, you know, those teachers get three months off a year during the summer, so, you know, that type of thinking.
Right.
And the way we do that is to increase our legislative outreach, which this board has not really been doing much of. We gotta contact these people and change minds, change thinking.
And it might be the case that these sorts of initiatives to really ramp up our achievement could go hand in hand with broader support from legislature. I mean, it might be a beautiful marriage. Now, hard to predict beautiful marriages, right? But initiative tends to have a, have a steam all its own.
And I agree with you, Jim, I think getting involved with our legislators and educating them on our district. I feel like during Stan's tenure, he has done a really good job of building some of these relationships with our legislators, and I think that we should continue to do that. And I know some of us were at the Ron Johnson at North, we saw him speak, Senator Johnson. And I feel like we've made a relationship with him there as well. I've been contacted by his office regarding the school safety issue, and, you know, continuing these kinds of dialogues, I think, is important, so that they are aware of our struggles in our district, and so. And I think, I'm sorry, but I just wanted to say that I think Stan is leaving us in a very good position. He has come in here, and he has stabilized our district, and we are doing so well, and we have great community support, and, you know, with the new superintendent, I think it's a great opportunity to just really launch us to the next level. I really think that, you know, we have momentum, and that we just have to commit.
If it wasn't for Stan, we wouldn't even be having this conversation.
Exactly, so we need to just, you know, continue and go forward.
I was going to say, Stefan, I had an opportunity to attend part of the Blue Ribbon Commission hearings that were held in Oshkosh about a week ago, two weeks ago. And there were several districts who were invited to speak. One was La Myra, one was Nina, and another one was Appleton, I believe. And that was very eye-opening. They all spoke to some similar things in terms of areas of need. They talked about the high cost of special education programs. Two of them talked about the high costs of English language learners. Some of them, I guess those were the two main areas. Oh, another area they talked about was the, the challenge in finding qualified teachers. That they're not able to find teachers in such areas as technology education, and some of the science areas, and so on. Special education is a huge need in terms of the number of teachers statewide who are on what they're now calling licenses with stipulations. They used to be called emergency licenses, which means that teachers were not fully licensed when they took those jobs. So, it's one thing to talk about, like Finland, and only admitting a small number of people into your teacher education program when you have classrooms you have to fill because the children are there, so. But I had a chance again to listen to Ted Nitsky, who was part of the Blue Ribbon Commission, talk last night about the impact that these people are having on this commission. And not knowing some of the issues, especially those faced by rural school districts, is really hitting home with these folks. They're not all lawmakers, there are two public school people on there, Ted Nitsky being one, and I believe the Green Bay superintendent is the other one. But it's mostly lawmakers, and then Dan Ross Miller from WASB is also part of that group. But I, I know that they're close to the point of writing their report, I don't know what that's gonna look like. Although Ted did offer to write it, so, that would be a good thing, I believe. But, yeah, I think, I really do believe we're, we're on the edge here of moving forward in a new and exciting direction, building on what Stan has done for us, and how he has led us these past six years, and defining what we want to look like. We have a facilities plan that, you know, looks out twenty years, but we don't really have a, a plan that looks at, okay, what are our graduates gonna look like in twenty years, or what are they gonna look like in five years, or ten years? And those of you with children in school, those are, those are key questions in terms of what impact this education system has on your children and our community overall.
Absolutely. Can I drill down for just a minute? So, mentioning the Learning Partnership Canada annual event in Toronto, May thirty first. Can we here and now decide if that's a relationship we wanna pursue? And by the way, Ron Cannell has offered to stop in Oshkosh to meet with us, and route from South America to Europe in early June, if we wish to exercise that option. But can we decide here and now if, and I don't wanna pass this on to somebody else. I'm absolutely at my peak time with my programming, and so I can't go to Toronto, I'd love to. I also don't think it'd be appropriate for me to advocate for my attendance, but if somebody else is able to go, ideally we'd have an administrator, superintendent, or key leader in the district, and a board member, or two board members, or something. But is that a conversation we can have right now, and put to resolution right now?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I think it'd be really cool to see a teacher who may have an interest in formulating programs like the one that they're, you know, that they're celebrating. You know, the whole, you know, business model beginning to end, seeing your product, make it, you know, make it big on that grand scale. So, I, I think that would be something that if we were to allocate resources, that we'd wanna make sure that we have, you know, maybe that's teacher or program coordinator who might be that person that we might be able to see that might be invigorated, inspired, to take something that way.
Is there someone from the board who would like to attend that?
I'm not allowed to lead the country, so.
I can't talk super perfectly without speaking with my wife first about schedules.
I'm out of town, I'm already gone, sorry.
Has anybody spoken to Dr. Cartwright about this opportunity?
She did, she viewed, I know, the conversation in March, and I believe a follow-up conversation, or when, yeah. I'm nearly certain I had a conversation, at least in part, about that topic. But not recently, and not in great detail.
When is the date again?
March thirty, uh, May thirty, thirty first, sorry.
I would have to look at things, but I would be open, if that's what the board wants, to go forward with that relationship, I would be willing to go up there.
And I would like to see Ron come, not the name right that time.
Yeah.
Him coming in June, or whenever he's passing through between continents.
I'll be in touch.
Okay.
I mean, it would be great to get Dr. Cartwright involved in this as well, if that's an option. And if somebody wants to see if she's available. I know she will, she'll be here the week before that, so, but I think we would need to know soon.
I'm happy to reach out and see if she can make it.
And what about current, like what Bob said about a teacher or administrator currently in the district? What about, would any?
Yeah, that's what I do before.
Perhaps Dr. Dunlop, could you?
But that's something, that's up to them, what they think that, I mean, you know, what.
Could you weigh in on the best candidate maybe from the district to attend?
Is that something that, you know, your administration team and your, is that something that you think that you guys? You know, how does, how does the administration feel about that relationship? How do they feel about his presentation? How do they feel about those things?
Well, I think, yeah, that's a tough question to ask, because right now, we're probably at the worst time of addressing something like this, only because we're in between two superintendents.
Right.
So, so you don't wanna go too far down a given road without, without involving both. So, we're almost involving two people every step along the way right now, so it's a little, I, I think part of it is having that initial conversation with Dr. Cartwright would probably be a good idea as a starting point, and then she could provide a little light to guide her way.
Okay. Couple notes here. Is there any further discussion on this tonight? I think we're in agreement that we'd like to have someone attend the Canadian event on May thirty-one, and have Ron Cannell visit us at some point in June. Is there any other discussion for tonight? I didn't necessarily think we could reach a list of tos, okay, go ahead.
Sure. So, I've, I've been sitting here kind of taking notes of like bullet points, of things that we said were like outcome-related type things. And one was, you know, like this campaign to begin recruiting top-quality professionals from wherever that may be. But I'm not gonna list them all, but I've just kind of taken like a note of like four of them. And I guess I don't, I don't want us to drop the ball on what Allison kinda started our conversation around is, you know, do we, do we as a board wanna continue forward on this? Do we wanna modify what we have in existing, you know, in an existing form? And so, I don't, I don't necessarily know the direction of where we wanna go with that, other than I'm a working group kinda guy, so, you know.
I think modifying this, because we already kind of have that discussion. When Vicky gets here, we're gonna kind of reevaluate our goals. I really think that that needs to be with maybe, to do something this big, when we just, we have one, and, I mean, that's a big undertaking. And I think that maybe it'd be better for Vicky to come in, get acquainted, and then have her look at this, have her talk to her cabinet, and then we look through it, you know, I just, to do this right now, especially in the summer, and to do all that, I think that's just.
And I, and I guess I wasn't necessarily suggesting that we would do that right now, I was suggesting of, what's our bigger picture on that? You know, what do, what do we see? So, I think what you're, what you're stating is actually fits in line with what I was going towards. So, you know, it's, it's kind of where are we going with it? So, if we wanna wait for Vicky to get her, to get her feet wet in the district, and get her, you know, get acclimated with the team and the community, and then come back to that, you know, three, three months, four months after that, I think that's great. I think, you know, I think that's what we want, you know, to come out of, out of this conversation, is we kinda wanna set a timeline of, you know, we want Vicky to be acclimated, we wanna come back to these goals. Let's, you know, let's suggest a timeline for just that, you know, so. So, and I don't know what that timeline is, and I don't know if we wanna set that timeline, that date of when we wanna come back to something like this.
And Vicky has to be a part of that conversation.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
So.
It may be that first meeting in August would be the meeting that Luther Olson would be able to attend, but he wanted to make sure the other two guys he wanted to invite here would be available. So, that might be a time to kinda kick off that conversation with Dr. Cartwright.
I don't know, two heads, Ross Miller.
Ross Miller and John Forrester.
SAA.
SAA.
And then they were.
School Administrators Alliance.
And they were talking that there's been some new developments, and certain, certain people were going in certain directions, different directions with that, and they were all gonna get their ducks in a row before they brought it to us in August. It's kind of what I understood in that conversation, yeah.
So, the Blue Ribbon Report hopefully will be done, or at least nearly done, where you could get a draft. You would have those legislators in front of you. You've already done some processing of the no time to lose piece, which has highlighted some directions you wanna go, as well as some challenges that you're probably gonna need to work with them on in terms of, you know, legislation, which isn't a bad thing. So, that's a lot hitting in August, and, and obviously, Dr. Cartwright's gonna wanna be a big part of that conversation, appropriately so. So, she'll have some time in the district then, so it should work, the timing should work out very, very well.
Good.
So, I think realistically, it might be better for us to say September to come back to that? Just because of what you just said, David, it sounds like August is going to be really busy, you know, so.
Well, and, and, you know, we have a business cycle in schools, the startup of schools, that's gonna take a lot of, a lot of the new superintendent's energy, establishing relationships, coming in. No, go ahead.
So, I totally interrupted you, I'm really sorry.
That's fine.
But I agree, because this seems to happen, and I'm gonna say it for Steve, we cannot lose momentum on this. We cannot stop on this. Even if it's small steps, we keep moving with this, and, yeah.
Well, are we willing to say, are we willing to commit to greatness? I think that that is, I think we need to do that. I mean, are we all, as a board, are we saying yes, we're going to do this?
Steve, first.
I wondered, Steve.
Oh, bless you, Steve.
Well, like I said, I think if, you know, we are all committed because we ran for school board, I don't think anybody runs for school board saying, I wanna take this, school this, this, and take it.
But taking actions towards greatness, I guess is better.
We need to take the actions, we can say it, but the actions are.
Well, remember, your Strategic Plan two point oh is in its last year. So, there's a great deal of work that we're gonna need to do to reconvene with the committee, or with the community, as well as what you just said, in terms of what your focus is going to be. So, this is, the timing's right, the timing's right for all this.
I say we start off the next school year with an official declaration, and we all sign it, and it's symbolic, and we just.
We make it big.
Yeah, and we're just, that is, that is what we're doing.
That's great, Stephanie, I agree. May I bring up one related point on this report? I have wondered for some time if it's helpful to have a voice guiding our board and our administrative team from those who have built organizations of excellence, right? That could be healthcare, or university, or manufacturing, consultancy, whatever that is. I'm intrigued by, you know, where we maybe see it most recently is HR and recruiting, right? Where we've, we've had occasional challenges attracting candidates at some level, right, for whatever reason. And I'm curious to have an advisory board, or an occasional voice, or a good friend, whatever term we put to that, from somebody who's recruited top-level talent to an unlikely space in flyover country, right? So, what is, so, we have a credible voice saying, here's how we did it, right? So, a buttoned-up, locked-tight case study. The same might be true of marketing and communications, or food service, or facility, or whatever it might be. But I, I'd love to see a team, a small team assembled, that can guide us, an occasional go-to panel, or a collection of individuals. We don't have to resolve that tonight, but I, I wanna voice it, I'd like to have a conversation about that at some point. One of the, I won't go on forever. I have a very close relative who was a number-two person in a very large multinational company, and recounted to me recently, when we were at a wedding, how in two thousand eight, the revenue's dropped by thirty percent, right? So, off a cliff, all this scramble to save the business and rebuild the business, and now they're in a much better position than they were pre-crash, pre-two thousand eight. And I think of that, like, what's it like to have that voice of this worst-case catastrophe happening? And you simply rebuild, and you look at anything, and you say, thank goodness for the crash. That was the best thing that ever happened to us. Those kinds of voices, that say, oh, there's a whole new way about, going about this. Not to circumvent our team, or our staff, or the board, but as another voice towards a solution.
For the board, for us to?
Call it an advisory board, or panel, or a circle of friends, or a thousand friends of OASD, whatever. Call it an advisory board, or panel, or a circle of friends, or a thousand friends of OASD, whatever we want to call it then. Won't be a thousand, though. Might be three friends of OASD.
I think we've had some robust conversation here tonight. In terms of maybe some of us getting out of our comfort zones a little bit, and we're thinking about not only where we are, but where we could be. And so, we've got a plan, it sounds like, in that you're going to be contacting Dr. Cartwright. You're going to be contacting someone in the district who might be interested and are willing to go to Canada on May 31 and learn from that conference. And then we'll plan for early August to continue the conversation with the new superintendent. And with this being the last year of Strategic Plan 2.0, we're in a good position, moving forward, to redesign that next strategic plan and incorporate some of the things we've talked about today. As Steph said, we have to make sure we're going to incorporate, we can't lose our momentum. We have too many students depending on this. All right. Any other final thoughts here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
This was my pleasure. I think you can do this again sometime. All right, moving on. We have our Consent Resolution Agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item, or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Is there anyone who wanted to pull anything from tonight's agenda?
Did we want to pull, I have to bring it up, four?
Sure.
Yeah, I would like to pull four.
All right. Anyone else?
Pull three.
Pull three. Nobody else? I'll pull 1B. That still gives us two things.
Pretty much.
Pretty much. All right. So, we have Resolution 1A. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the appointments, resignations, and salary schedule as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. I'm sorry.
That's not consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. And two, thank you. One and two, sound like Lawrence Wells. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the layoff of teacher contract FTEs as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education. So, that's the consent resolution.
So moved.
Any discussion? All right. Please call the roll.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Carner?
Aye.
Carner, aye. Brusak?
Aye.
Brusak, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschall?
Aye.
Peschall, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. Resolution 1B. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District of Education approve the retirements as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
I just wanted to recognize these wonderful people during Teacher Appreciation Week who have chosen to leave our district at the end of this year. I've gotten to know some of these folks over time. I've visited in their classrooms. And we have Keith Dolan, who's retiring from North High School, having been with the district since 1991. Lisa Campbell, an interpreter at Perry Tipler, who's been with us since 1981. Beth Helm, who, I knew her B.C. before children, who's been with the district since 1986. Jean Kirsch, first-grade teacher at Carl Trager Elementary School. She's been in the district since 1985. Lois Pellinger, a cook helper at Perry Tipler since 1992. Lynn Rhodes, a media specialist, currently at Merrill Middle, Merrill Elementary, and Oaklawn Elementary. This says she's been with us since 2015. I think she left the district at one point and then came back. So, there is one that did actually come back to us. So, congratulations and thank you, Lynn. Susan Walsh, an impaired-vision teacher at South Park Elementary School. She's been in the district since 2002. And the last name on the list is noted as Anna Yase Zaycek. I've known her as Lori Yase Zaycek. She will be retiring from the district as a literacy resource teacher from Webster Stanley Elementary School. So, congratulations to all those individuals, and heartiest thanks for all of your contributions to the children of our school district. Please call the roll.
Carner?
Aye.
Carner, aye. Brusak?
Aye.
Brusak, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschall?
Aye.
Peschall, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Motion carried.
Resolution number three. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve updates to Board Policy 0166 agenda as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
I have one. So, just, and it's more, you guys all know this, but not necessarily that the public knows this in so many ways. So, the change to this policy came out at our reorganization meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, where I wanted to see if there was an opportunity to involve the public more into coming to the board. Many, many people have contacted me, saying that it's really hard to know when they can come and make statements to the board. And so, one of the ways that I thought was the easiest to do was make it so that the public can come to every board member and make a statement if they wish. So, you know, so that's, you know, to the public, you can come to every board, every school board meeting now and make comments on topics that are on the agenda and topics that are not on the agenda. And I think that's really important to our, to our community, to know that. And then I also want to say that it doesn't change the fact that we're going to have a listening session before the first? First meeting of every month at 5:00. So, those are opportunities for constituents of ours, people who have an invested interest in the education of children in the Oshkosh Area School District, to come and express the accolades that they may have, the concerns that they may have, but overall, the ability to communicate what's going on for them to us and to the administration. So, that's all I have.
All right. Please call the roll.
Brusak?
Yes.
Brusak, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschall?
Aye.
Peschall, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Carner?
Aye.
Carner, aye. Motion carried.
Thank you. Resolution four. Be it resolved that the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education approve the update to the 2018-19, 2019 school calendar as filed with the Secretary to the Board of Education.
I had asked for this one to be.
Wait, wait, wait.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, in the spirit of openness and candor here, I think this one was pulled to give Dr. Brown an opportunity to explain this.
So, you already approved the 2018-19 calendar. And in the staff report, and when we presented the information to you, we talked about the nine early release dates. When we sent out the calendar, it wasn't until somebody gave us feedback going, where's the March early release? And I didn't realize that it had not been highlighted on the calendar. So, it is now highlighted on the calendar, and so it will be more clear to teachers and the public that that is an early release date.
And which date was that specifically?
That is March 13th.
Circled in red with a.
Very good. Any other questions or comments on this agenda item? Please call the roll.
Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Peschall?
Aye.
Peschall, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Carner?
Aye.
Carner, aye. Brusak?
Aye.
Brusak, aye. Motion carried.
We, I don't believe we have any individually considered resolutions. Do we have any requests for future agenda items? There was a lengthy list that came up with the agenda.
I do.
Very good.
Three of us got letters from our assuming board and Pence congratulating us on our election, which he does every year, which is nice of him. But he also made an offer to come and meet with us to discuss budgetary offers, or information, or any other thing we'd want to talk about. And I was thinking that we should take advantage and invite him in either by himself, or perhaps tied in with whatever we were just talking about.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Great.
So, we'll put that on the agenda as a future. Any other future agenda items? Any announcements?
I have one. I was at West High School yesterday for the Teacher Appreciation Lunch, and I want to compliment our own food services. They catered the event, and it was fantastic. And I volunteered, this was my second year volunteering, and because the food service took over, you know, serving and setting up and cleaning up, I literally almost had nothing to do.
I know.
And they did such a great job, and all the teachers were, you know, where'd you guys get this food? I'm like, it's our food services. We thought it was catered from a nice restaurant or something, and it was fantastic. And it was, so shout out to our food services.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Very nice. Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. I don't have any paper on that. Am I supposed to have something?
You'll need to read that.
Oh, I just need to read that, okay. For the purpose of, number one, deliberating or negotiating the purchase, purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under Chapter 19.85, Pren 1, Pren E. A, Oshkosh Education Association or OEA negotiation strategies. B, Oshkosh Professional Employee Association, OPEA negotiation strategies. C, Non Teaching Employee Association, NTEA negotiation strategies. And number two, considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility under Chapter 19.85, Pren 1, Pren C. A, considering the employment and compensation of an administrator.
So moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Peschall?
Aye.
Peschall, aye. Carlin?
Aye.
Carlin, aye. Eliason?
Aye.
Eliason, aye. Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye. Carner?
Aye.
Carner, aye. Brusak?
Aye.
Peschall, aye. Olsted?
Aye.
Olsted, aye. Motion carried.
You're adjourned.
Are we staying here?